Okay.
Uh, we have one, uh, first one we have is, uh, American Red Cross Month. Commissioner, would you read that, please?
Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank our heroes, those who volunteer, donate blood, take life-saving courses, or provide financial donations to support an organization whose mission is to help those in need. And whereas we would like to remember those who help all of us here in the Hood County area, giving, by giving their time and their help to their neighbor, and thank our heroes, our volunteers, blood donors, class takers, and financial supporters who help us assist those in need. And whereas in the Chisholm Trail Chapter, the Red Cross works tirelessly through its forty employees and seven hundred and seventy-one volunteers to help when disaster strikes, when someone needs life-saving blood, or the comfort of helping, of a helping hand. It provides twenty-four-hour support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and provides training in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. And whereas across the country, the American Red Cross responds to nearly seventy thousand disasters a year, it provides some four hundred thousand services to military members, veterans and civilians, collects and distributes about forty percent of the nation's blood supply, and trains more than seven million people in first aid, water safety, and other safety skills this year. And whereas our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission, despite these challenges and economic times, the Red Cross continues to offer help and comfort to those in need. Therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Hood County, Texas, do hereby proclaim March two thousand and thirteen as American Red Cross Month. We encourage all Americans to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. Sign this twelfth day of March, two thousand and thirteen.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, this proclamation declaring, uh, this month as, uh, Red Cross Month.
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Uh, next one item is Poison Prevention Week. Commissioner Tout.
This proclamation for March seventeenth to twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen as Poison Prevention Week in Hood County, whereas our society has become increasingly dependent on household chemicals to perform labor-saving, time-saving miracles, and on medicine to provide health-giving, life-sustaining benefits. Whereas these products, when not used as intended or directed, may be hazardous, particularly if children gain access to them. Whereas over the past fifty-one years, the nation has been observing Poison Prevention Week to call attention to these hazards, and how proper handling and disposal of these substances and proper use of safety packaging can help eliminate them. Whereas the efforts of our community organizations, complemented by the efforts of the North Texas Poison Center, have reduced childhood poisonings in Hood County. Whereas the North Texas Poison Center, a regional poison center located at Parkland Health and Hospital System, provides the ultimate in human service programming, immediate, accessible emergency information to save lives of victims of poison-related emergencies. And whereas these programs must continue as long as even one child swallows a household product or medicine by mistake. Now, therefore, Judge Darrell Cochrane and the Commissioners of Hood County do hereby proclaim the week of March seventeenth through twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen as Poison Prevention Week in Hood County. Further, we direct the appropriate agencies in our local government to continue their cooperation with concerned citizens and community organizations, including our schools, to develop programs which will alert our people to the continued danger of misusing medicines and household products, and to promote effective safeguards against accidental poisonings among these young children.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the proclamation declaring the week of March seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen as Poison Prevention Week.
Motion.
Motion, second.
A motion made by Commissioner Tout, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Citizens' comments on pertaining to, I already have some, but is there any one else that wishes to, uh, address the Commissioners' Court on any agenda item? We have another one up here, Biff.
Got a couple more over here, too.
Biff got a couple on the right.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to address the Commissioners' Court on an agenda item? Okay, if y'all will complete those and give them to, uh, Chief Deputy, he will turn those in. Consent agenda, does any Commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Nothing? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Then all in favor? Aye, opposed? The motion carried. Uh, next item is subdivision roads and plats.
Judge Cochrane, Commissioners, uh, we ask that you hold a public hearing to discuss and consider establishing no parking in right-of-way in the Mid Haven Estates development. The development's located just off of twenty-four, twenty-five, or Mitchell Bend Highway in Precinct Two. We've received complaints of individuals parking in the bar ditch, disrupting the drainage within our roadway, and, uh, we do recommend that we do establish this no parking in right-of-way in this development.
Okay, a public hearing is now open to discuss and consider establishment of no parking in the right-of-way in Mid Haven Estates. Does anyone wish to comment during this public hearing? No one? Then the public hearing is closed.
Make the motion, we, that we approve the no parking and right-of-way signs for Mid Haven Estates.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Roan to approve the no parking. Uh, seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Next item is a public hearing to consider, uh, and take appropriate action, uh, on replat of lots two R dash one dash A and four R dash one dash A, block one of the village, uh, at Lake Granbury.
Judge, this replat's located off of Farm Market thirty-two-ten, or Mambrinal Highway, within the water quality district of Lake Granbury in Precinct Two. The developer proposes to replat lots two R one, three R one, and four R one into two lots, being a four-hundred-and-twelve-thousandths of an acre lot called two R one A and a four-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousandth of an acre lot called four R one A. This replat does adhere to all the county platting regulations, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, a public hearing is now open to consider the replat of those lots that is red, in block one and the village at Lake Granbury. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on this replating? Anyone? Okay, public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve this replating.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan, do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye, opposed? The motion carried. Public hearing to consider take appropriate action on the site development for the Scott Measured Service Incorporated, fifty-seven fourteen and fifty-seven eighteen Acton Circle, Granbury.
Judge, uh, the proposed plan is for a six-employee office building located at the fifty-seven fourteen, fifty-seven eighteen Acton Circle in the, in the Granbury Industrial Park. The property is within the water quality district of Walnut Creek in Precinct Four. The office building is to be served by public water and an OSSF. On February the twenty-eighth, the Development Commission reviewed this site plan and makes a recommendation to approve the Scott Measured Service Site Plan as presented.
Okay, uh, the public hearing is now open. Uh, does anyone wish to make a comment on the, uh, development plan for Scott Measured Servi-, uh, Measured Service Incorporated, fifty-seven fourteen and fifty-seven eighteen Acton Circle? Anyone? Okay, public hearing is closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
Motion.
Motion made by Dever, uh, seconded by Roan. Uh, any further discussion on this item? Then all in favor? Aye, opposed? The motion carried. Public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on site development plan for the, uh, MWS Properties, thirty-one oh-three James Road, Granbury, Texas.
Judge, this is a multi-phased plan for duplexes and multifamily units located at thirty-one oh-three James Road. It is within the water quality district of Lake Granbury in Precinct Three. The one-point-nine acre proposed project is served by public water and sewer. The applicant plans to construct a duplex at this time, but does show a future proposal of a second duplex, along with a seven, and then a ten-plex, uh, multifamily unit. Development Commission reviewed this site plan and made, and made a recommendation to approve with a modification to the original plan of two access points off of James Road instead of what was proposed as five access points. Commissioner Tout and I met with the applicant, Will Steed, on March the fourth, on-site to discuss two issues. One being the two access points, which Mr. Steed has agreed to, which we, we looked at, and both sites would have, uh, open visibility to, to enter and to exit, uh, James Road. And the second issue was to help alleviate surface water drains, which comes from the Acton Elementary School property to the east and flows west across this property to the James Road drainage structure for, for that roadway. Uh, also, uh, this water also crosses across, uh, the land that butts to the north of this property we're talking about, the Creations Child's, Child Care. So with that, uh, talking to the applicant about his two access points, the Development Commission does recommend approval of this site plan.
Okay, a public hearing is now open to consider and take appropriate action on the site development plan for MWS Properties at thirty-one oh-three Granbury. And I believe, I have some, Stephen Walt, would you like to come up and, and address the Commissioners' Court?
Hi, uh, appreciate the time to talk here this morning. I live at thirty-one oh-two James Road, which is directly across the street from this proposed development. We have serious issues with flooding in the neighborhood. This property drains across the street, under James Road, into the bar ditch in front of my house, which currently overflows now when it rains hard. In two thousand and seven, we flooded almost five houses out on that street. I came to the county then, I met with the current Commissioner, who basically told me there's nothing he could do about it. I met with Don Lenny, nothing's been done. They shot some grades of drainage ditches, that's been it. A couple, last week, I met with Commissioner Tout, who came out and was very helpful, actually met with him twice. We need to solve the drainage problem before we add to it. I had water within three foot of my front door, as did about four or five other residents. It floods all the way down to the entrance to Stony Creek. Every house there, anybody's ever driven down that road when it rains knows it's, it becomes a lake. Fountain Village added to the problem, and now we want to add to it again. Alls we're asking is you follow the regulations. It says in here that Commissioners' Court's responsible to provide proper drainage. It's not doing that. It also says in here that future developments can't overload downstream. It's obviously already overloaded. Adding to it is not going to solve any prob-, it's not going to go away by itself. I've been coming here since two thousand and seven, and I've gotten no action, other than a meeting, which was the best thing that ever happened since two thousand and seven. So I would like to thank my Commissioner for taking the time to meeting with us. But meetings don't fix the problem. And this is a serious problem, and the county is responsible for it. Counties approved these developments, they approved Stony Creek development, that drainage is terrible. All the water from that new proposed YMCA comes down behind my house, that's overloaded now. Where's that water going to go? I live between two rivers when it rains. I'm flooded from the back, and I'm flooded from the front. Is the county going to buy my property when you flood it out? I shouldn't have to buy flood insurance. I don't live in a flood zone, I live in a man-made flood zone. The runoff from this property, there may not be any more water coming on this property, but it's certainly going to have a lot of runoff. Look at all that roof top area. That water's going to run through one culvert, going into one drainage ditch, in front of my house, that now overflows. Now, if I was within three or four foot of my front door previously, I'm going to have to open my front and back door to let the water run through after you build this development. So how this can be approved, I don't know. I'm just asking, follow the regulations that you people have in place, that says you can't do this. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. John Hall.
Morning Judge and Commissioners. I'm John Hall, I live at thirty-five oh-six Fountain Way in Fountain Village, and I apologize that Fountain Village has added to Mr. Walt's, uh, drainage issues. I do want to confirm that, uh, we have a huge drainage problem in that area. Uh, I drive by Mr. Walt's home daily, and certainly when it rains, it doesn't have to be a huge rain. Uh, his front lawn is, is a little lake, he's not exaggerating at all. To add to that, uh, is, well, uh, is really, uh, should not happen. We at Fountain Village, incidentally, in fact, I don't believe any of the neighbors have received any notice of this, we were not aware of the Development Commission's, uh, hearing, although I'm, I'm sure that it must have been in the, in the newspaper, but we did not receive any notice until, uh, I learned about it yesterday. And, uh, my home is right next to this property, and, uh, our issues there are two things, certainly the drainage. Adding impervious coverage to this property will definitely increase the, the drainage problem. It'll flow through the weep holes in the Fountain Village, but more likely, most of it will go across the street. And, uh, there's a huge amount of water that comes, like Mr. Walt said, all the way from, uh, up near the, the middle school, uh, down through Stony Creek and through, through these homes. Uh, it, it is a major, a real serious problem. The other issue that we have is traffic. Uh, we already have, James Road is only a two, two-lane road, and we have a lot of traffic, especially the go-to-school and, and coming back from school traffic, but in the morning is very difficult, uh, in that area. And if you're going to add, um, I'm not sure how many residents would be in this property, possibly eighteen is what I was guessing, uh, eighteen units it appeared, no, eighteen residents, let's say. Even with a couple entries and access, access points, it is, it's going to really increase our traffic issues. Uh, we've already had accidents out there. Uh, we had a rollover, uh, down in front of Stony Creek a couple of years ago, and, uh, I urge the county to, uh, I think you do have the power to do something about this, but, uh, in the very least, I would ask you to extend the decision for at least a month on this. Let us get familiar with what this development is, this is the first time I've seen a site plan. Uh, we have several of our residents here, and, uh, I thank you for this time, but, uh, we are very much opposed to this, at this point, with, uh, with just now discovering really what the, the proposed development is. And, uh, we ask that you delay this for at least a month. Thank you.
Candy Wright.
Thank you, sir and judge, for the opportunity to speak here. I am a resident of Fountain Village, we are directly adjacent to the property that will be developed. It is a small area, as you look at it, it's only two acres, looks like two homes might fit there, the thought of having a seven-plex and another duplex, that's nine homes out of there, at least eighteen residents, at least eighteen more cars. The area is not big enough to support this, I think. Um, I know John mentioned it is a two-lane road. I would call it a one-lane low that, road that two cars have to go through, because it's not even wide, as you would think of a two-lane road. It's a very small road, it does not have shoulders, it has very small ditch areas on both sides with very small culverts, and I am definitely a witness to the flooding. If you drive by any time that it's raining, you will see the residents right across from those three or four yards are completely underwater. The water comes mainly from the back property where the, um, elementary school is, and all that water drains into the two acres, got about the only fifty trees left in the entire block, and a grassy area, it all drains in there, and it soaks it up. If you remove that, all that water is going to go straight into their homes, and probably onto our homes adjacent to it under that brick wall, which we are concerned with the water under the brick wall, and we're also concerned with the traffic. Um, it's already pretty hard to get in and out in the morning, if we add another eighteen residents or another eighteen vehicles, that, uh, property is surrounded in three sides by other developments, so there's no way in and out except the front. And it's a curve. So, we ask that you at least delay the decision and let us meet with the people that are going to be doing this development, to see what is going to happen in the future. And we care. Uh, we care about the people in Stony Creek, we care about the people in Fountain Village, we care about Stephen and the daycare that's next to it, the traffic alone, in and out, with the daycare traffic and that added traffic, I think it needs to be considered, um, before any decision is really made. Uh, let us meet other people and see if something can be done, so everybody's interest is looked after. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Rinke, is, did I pronounce that right?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for your time. Um, I do own Creations Child Care and Learning Center at thirty-fifteen James Road. Um, I'm here today to express my concerns about the drainage. Um, I have met with Commissioner Tout and Don, and been very helpful. Commissioner Tout has, um, some solutions that he is working on, uh, for me, that I, I do hope, uh, will work out, he's worked very hard at that, and I would like to tell you thank you. Um, I've been at this property since June of two thousand and five, and I have witnessed the drainage issues and, uh, water going over James Road. Um, the water flooding out Mr. Walt's house and, um, the other people's houses there on James Road, too. Um, I agree with them, um, asking for a delay of the decision on this development, um, to maybe work out the issues, um, that we do have, as Commissioner Tout's been working on. Um, I do to, here to make y'all aware that the drainage issue is a problem, and we ask that y'all help fix that problem, or solution with it before we do any more developments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Betty Jo McPherson.
I agree with everything people have said before me. I happen to be one of the houses that the water gets to the front door now, and the backyard is the same way from the drainage, drainage ditch out back. And with more development in the area, corrections or something needs to be done to prevent this. And I would ask any and all of you, how would you feel sitting in your house, and you have water that far from your front door? And if it was been a heavier rain, we would have really flooded, and the back really isn't any better. So think about yourself, too, and how it would make you feel. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A public hearing is still open, does anyone else wish to make any comments while the public hearing is o-, going on? Okay, uh, the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve this, uh, development plan.
Make a motion.
To approve it?
To approve it.
All right, have a motion made by Commissioner Tout, is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Commissioner Dever. Uh, any further discussion on this, Commissioner?
One thing we had looked at, I mean, I, I know that the area on Stony Creek does flood. Uh, what we've been looking at is ways to reroute water from the north behind, uh, that's, that's one of the things we're looking at. Uh, there's an issue with who owns some of the property, but I think if we can divert some of the water to the back, that, that may assist us. But one, one of the problems with the area in Stony Creek is, we're not sure that, that the, the floor elevation on the homes were elevated enough to be a, a safety resolution. Uh, the, the houses behind Stony Creek have never complained about being flooded, and when we were out there just looking, the houses looked to be a little bit, a little bit higher. And so there may be, there may be an issue with, with the elevations of the homes. Granted, the county did allow a builder to go in and build, but on the plans, he has floor elevations. If those weren't met, how can we be held accountable for that? Because we don't have inspectors that, that check that out. I mean, that would be a builder's issue. We want to work with you, and whatever we can, but I don't think it's right for you to come in and just dump on us and say it's our problem. It's, it's both of our problems, so we've got to-
It is your problem, because we just, we, we have lived six and a half years-
Wait a minute, the, the public hearing is over.
We're looking, we're looking to help.
Thank you.
But it's going to take, it's going to be a collaborative effort. It's not going to be something that it's just our fault, or it's not your fault. We want to work with you. Let us work with it and, and see what we can do. Uh, I mean, like I say, if your builder built too low, that's not the county's fault. Yeah, but, I mean, but we want to work with you. If we can div- Okay.
If I may, Judge, um, I understand that there could be a builder issue here. That doesn't preclude the fact that these folks, when they bought their homes, had no idea, that that builder maybe didn't follow the rules and elevate those homes to the right level. So their being ignorant of that is not reason enough to simply leave them, um, leave them out without a fix. Um, I, I would recommend, if you're going to approve this, that you approve it with a, with a delay until a solution is reached, not, not approve it based on the fact that it might, because it slides through regulations, simply go on like any other development does. Well, I mean, that's just a, a suggestion to, from a business standpoint, to solve it properly, and not, not actually have, uh, someone out there breaking ground before the solution is found. I respect John's opinion especially, because John's done developments in Hood County, uh, so he knows what he's talking about. If there's a problem there that the builder had initially, um, we can't, I mean, I can't in my own conscience hold these folks responsible for what the builder's mistakes were, and, and to, to say that they have to suffer the consequence until a solution is found, well, one of the consequences might be a chicken drowner that ends up in their front room, not in their front yard. So, so I would say if we're going to prove it, Don, um- So, so I would say if we're gonna approve it, Don, um, and I don't object to approving, approving, uh, developments that meet guidelines, but if there are ensuing problems, which there obviously are even without that development, I would suggest that we approve it with a delay that allows for a, a, an acceptable solution to both parties to be found. Now you, that means you have the approval there to begin after the drainage solution is found.
That's our only concern is the drainage.
I mean, that seems to make, make sense. You're, you're talking about time and, and if you do that, you're forcing both parties to look at the drainage.
Don, do you, I, I know you've looked at this. What, what about a solution to this?
Well, as Commissioner Tout had spoken, uh, the, the water does come down from the north and there is a, a, a wide drainage easement that goes back behind the properties that, that meet up with this, this drainage swell that's in Stony Creek. I don't, uh, firsthand, I don't know, but by looking at it, I, I think it's bypassing that section. The only problem we have is that it's private property in between this drainage easement and the drainage easement back behind these people's homes, which it's not a county easement. Their property goes through this drainage easement. I mean, the, Mr. Walt had contacted Mr. James. I thought that's who owned it also. There's a, there's a, uh, gas well on it, so somebody's got on it, but by the, by Hood Cad, Mr. James owns it. But they've talked, him and his wife both have talked to Mr. James and he says he, he don't own it. So, I don't know.
Somebody in the county's gotta know who owns it.
Figure out, I don't know who would own it then.
Somebody's collecting taxes on it. There ought to be a way to follow the dollar and find out who owns it.
But I can't, yes. But I can't tell you, you know, for a fact that we haven't shot the drainage ditch back behind these people's house because it's private property. I mean, well, well, if directed, we'll ask each one of them for permission to, to be on that property to, to shoot elevations, but, uh, and then try to locate whoever does own this. I'll go to the gas well people. They've had to lease from somebody.
Right.
Good remedy.
The drainage ditch in the back has nothing to do with this development. This development comes propped after that. It comes in the front. This goes down the bar ditch in the front of the house.
Yes, and-
There's no way you can divert that up and around and down.
No.
And you're not gonna divert, well, right now you divert it through my living room, but that's gotta stop.
And if this project's not built, the water will continue to run like it has been. How we can do that? I mean, I'm, I just don't, I don't know.
But building this is only gonna add to the problem.
Sir?
Building this, all that rooftop runoff, that ground doesn't absorb any of that water anymore because it's just-
Have you been out there looking at it?
Yeah.
No. In the, in the regulations, we don't, you know, being two acres, one point nine acres, uh, there's no, I mean, it's obvious what, what the water does. It's just getting it to the, to the bar ditch. That's where it's gonna run. So, as far as, there wasn't any sense of giving, uh, doing a drainage plan. This is just something that, in the President, that we'd never, you know, when it's small like this, if it's ten, twelve acres where it's got more room to do anything, yeah, we would require one, but you're talking about a lot that water, you know, flows across, so there's no, no reason. And then the site development permit, uh, guidelines, you know, it doesn't, it just gives a promote, most method of water, sewer, and drainage. And that's what we got on March the fourth when we met with the, with Mr. Walt and Mr. Rinke and the developer, Will Steed. But to be honest with you, I, I don't know. When we talked in two thousand and seven, I, I gave Mr. Walt a cover of, a copy or, or gave it to him, or showed it to him, the way the water flowed. But then also on the final plat, we had finished floor elevations for these lots that abut this drainage. And officially, I can't tell you whether it was built that finished floor. If it's not, I don't know how far below it is. If it ain't, I don't know that we can do anything.
Or you're saying that just the houses are too low?
I, not for a fact, no. I, I mean, I, with-
The elevation, I had it surveyed, my floor elevation, this is exact elevation on the plant. It was approved.
On the plat? No, on-
On the development plans, if you looked at the development plans, it's got a finished floor elevation. I had my house surveyed, that is correct.
Okay, this is on the final plat that was stamped?
This is on the development plan.
I'm saying final plat. This is what they have to look at, yeah. They'll have their own development.
Take a look, yeah. Well, not table. They got, they got, they got, they got, and it'll die for, and it wouldn't come back.
My front yard is not the drainage ditch. So, that doesn't matter if my house is twelve foot high or two foot low. It's not supposed to flow through my front yard. It's supposed to be contained in the bar ditch.
Don, have we got, have we got shots of the bar ditch drainage all the way from start of the daycare center to Stony Creek entrance?
That's-
Plus, what the difference is between the bar ditch and their yard?
Yeah, tha, tha, that's, and really, that's the heart of the problem. Everything, it's, it doesn't have that much of a fall.
Yeah.
Whatever accumulates, it's, it's just gonna be slow getting.
Right.
And I'm sure that's what's happening on the, on the backside.
I've given photos to the former commissioner, the current commissioner, the county chairman, city, uh, we've been to the city of-
Yes, we got a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah, I know. We have a, we have a motion made by Commissioner Tout, seconded by Commissioner Dever to approve this. Uh, is there any further discussion, uh, from the coun, uh, commission? And all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Uh, it's a, uh, it, it's a two to two and, uh, so, uh, Commissioner Tout and Dever for and Commissioner Roan and, uh, Judge Cochrane against, so it's tabled or it's not approved. So, uh, we, it'll, they'll have to come back and put it on the agenda again. All right, thank you very much. Next item is, uh, public, uh, hearing to consider and take appropriate action on the site development for Bootlegger RV Park at, uh, forty-two oh-two Fall Creek.
Judge, this site plan is for a twenty-eight space RV park with a facility for showers and laundry located off FM one sixty-seven South or Fall Creek Highway, situated on a total of eight and a half acres within the water quality district of Lake Granberry and Walnut Creek. The proposed plan consists of onsite water wells and OSSF. Site plan does require a variance to section five point four B of the, of the development permit regulations. On February twenty-eighth, the development commission reviewed the site plan and makes a recommendation to the court not to approve this proposed plan as presented.
Okay, a public hearing is now open, uh, to consider and take appropriate action. Well, it's, uh, to consider the development of Bootlegger RV Park at forty-two oh-eight, uh, Fall Creek. Does anyone wish to make any comments? And come forward then.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Ron Cummings. I own Bootlegger Liquor Store. I own the property and I'm asking for the variances to put this RV park in. I'm asking that you consider this with common sense in mind and right and wrong. I think we just witnessed some right and wrong, which has gone from government these days. The board, I had to chuckle while I was at the board meeting. I got to thinking about my dad. My dad says you have two ears and one mouth, you ought to listen twice as much. And I got me a pretty good full deal of that at that board meeting. I got to listen to a bunch and I got to say very little. Uh, I was not allowed to really present what, uh, what I was asking for. We said the pledges to the flag a while ago. I meet all requirements and regulations for the state of Texas for this RV park. Everything that the state requires, I meet. And or exceed, the highway access, I meet. Sewer, water, I meet. All those regulations. In the county, Hood County, it's backed up to De Cordova Bend, the city. I took my plans and specs to the city of De Cordova and presented it to their city council. I got no objection, total praise. I'm asking for four variances. Number one, you have a, a fence requirement, a privacy fence. The highway frontage, we will landscape. The right-hand side, we have a substation. The left-hand side, we have my liquor store. Now, the back is to De Cordova's back fence and there are three homes there. If any of those people would like to have a privacy fence put up whatsoever, I would be more than happy to do that. A lot of people don't like privacy fences. Second thing is concrete and asphalt. I propose to put down a good road base and then cover it with granite, crushed granite. This will allow any contaminants off of any of the vehicles, whether it be diesel or gasoline, et cetera, to stay on my property and not go to the other properties. Third thing, onsite water. I've got a water well, it's in the Second Trinity. Very good water, been tested. There's nothing wrong with my water. Matter of fact, it's cleaner than what you get out of the tap that's gone through the systems because it has nothing in it, it's just pure water. It's been tested. We will drill another second well if it needs to be, get our permits from the state. Samples will be taken monthly and tested. Then the third thing, fourth thing, excuse me, is the aerobic system for the sewer. I had an expert design this. We're asking for twenty-five spaces. She designed it for twenty-eight spaces, so we've exceeded what we need to look at. James, with your health department, your expert, I'd like to ask a couple of questions if that's okay with the court of James. James, is this system designed to meet state regulations?
After review and further discussion with Mr. Cummings, um, he has decided to take out the, the proposed shower and laundry facilities and in that case it would be the minimum state standards.
Okay, second thing is, it was designed by a professional. If it's put in by a professional and maintained by a professional, is this system going to fail and pollute Lake Granberry?
Uh, according to the rules of state, that is, it would not, it's making a problem.
Do you see any health hazard for what I have recommended here today?
All I can say is that, again, it meets the minimum state standard. That's a bill that the state has set, public health protection. That being said, again, it doesn't need county rights. Question directly, if it meets the minimum state standards, would you consider not to create a public health?
County regulations are saying for him to hook up, right?
Yeah, it's, and this particular proposal is-
Right. Right. So, bottom line is, county regulations says for him to hook up.
Yes.
Yep.
What's the distance for him to hook up?
I thought the variance was for, because it was built in the watershed for that creek that you were requesting.
I beg your pardon?
Weren't you requesting a variance because it was in the watershed of, what, is it Bear Creek?
Fall Creek.
Is it Fall Creek that's right next to you?
Walnut.
Walnut?
No, sir. We, we are higher and we, our drain, our property drains totally in the opposite direction of Walnut Creek. I'm just asking for a common sense approach to this. I'm not in the district of Amud's. Uh, I don't plan on giving up my rights to my property. My rights are taken away from me every day and I can't do anything about it. I'm not gonna sign a piece of paper and pay somebody money to join something that I disagree with. I am totally within my rights of putting this in as far as the state is concerned and I ask you to look at that. Uh, I'm a small businessman. Is this small business court-friendly? I ask you to approve this, please. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else, uh, while the public hearing is, uh, going on, anybody who else wish to make comments on this? No one, and the public hearing is closed. Now, uh, you say that you guys recommended not to approve this, right?
Yes, the development, yes.
But then it meets all state standards, minimum standards, right?
According to Mr. McCollson, yes.
Okay. All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve this. Any, no one? And-
To, to, what are we talking about here, to?
To approve him, uh, developing, the, approving the development plan for the Bootlegger RV Park that you see on your screen there in front of you.
Well, based on the information I've gotten now concerning the state standards, I'd recommend we approve it.
All right, I have a commi, uh, motion made by Commissioner Roan to approve. Uh, is there a second? Second? And, uh, the motion died for a lack of a second. Uh, okay, next item is E.
Wait a minute, what does that mean? It's neither approved or denied, right?
That's right. It's, it died for a lack of a second.
Which means it can be-
Brought back up.
Can be brought back up, okay.
All right, public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on the addendum section one, development, uh, permit regulations of article seven.
Judge, uh, this particular item was, uh, was reviewed by the development commission on, also on February the twenty-eighth. Since that time, the development commission did, uh, make a recommendation to approve, uh, making an addendum to our regulations with, uh, with, concerning holding tanks for sewage. But, uh, since that time, uh, Mr. McCollson has spoken with the county attorney and, if you don't mind, I'd ask him to come and address the court and-
The, the public hearing is now open on this, so you're, you're speaking during the public hearing time, okay?
Good. Uh, after further discussion with the county attorney, uh, following, again, the development commission's proposed approval, the county attorney felt that it would be better to insert that language into a county order for onsite sewage facilities rather than in the development regulations. The purpose for that is, is, uh, she felt that it would be more enforceable under some existing state law. Once that's adopted into the order, uh, chapter seven of the state water code actually allows from a department to more stringently enforce those standards, uh, even so far as it can go to Travis County if necessary. Whereas in the develop, development regulations, it's only a class C misdemeanor. So, it, it would provide better protection and better enforcement abilities should it be necessary. So, I would ask that it be, uh, uh, table at this time until we can do something more or whatever Don may recommend.
Okay, well, while the public hearing, is there anyone else wish to make any comments about this? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Uh, I believe the recommendation out of the public hearing was to table this, is that right?
Uh, Judge, in, in light of what the county attorney had said, I think, uh, I can't speak for the development commission, but as director of development, I would recommend that you disapprove, uh, making an addendum to our regulations for the, uh, holding tanks for sewage.
You're making a recommendation that we approve it?
Disapprove.
Disapprove?
Disapprove, making the change in the regulations.
It's gonna be handled in the, in the sewage order of the county, so.
So moved.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Roan to disapprove this. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Budget and finance.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Uh, we have a few budget amendments that have been requested from elected officials in, uh, Constable Precinct One. Uh, requests have been made to move five hundred dollars into education and travel out of books and publications in order to send a clerk, uh, to a civil process school on April seventh. Uh, the elections administrator has asked to move fifty dollars from small equipment into dues and subscription, uh, because of an unanticipated increase in dues that were billed for two thousand and thirteen. Justice of the Peace Precinct One is asking to move one hundred dollars into supplies out of books and publications, uh, for unanticipated expenditures. Uh, the sheriff has asked to move four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars out of his, um, abandoned vehicle fund, uh, no, I'm sorry, out of, uh, his sheriff's administration, uh, oh-one oh-five sixty-four, uh, into, uh, oh-one oh-three ninety. Uh, but that would be funded by a transfer from his abandoned vehicle fund, Fund Sixty-One, and that is to purchase equipment in order to allow him to do forensics, uh, on, uh, cellphone communications. Uh, I believe most of the, uh, elected- I believe most of the elected officials or their representatives are here, if you have any questions for them. Otherwise, I would recommend you approve these requested budget amendments.
Entertain a motion to approve this.
Motion.
Second.
A comm, a motion made by Commissioner Taut, seconded by Commissioner Rohn. Any further discussion on the line item adjustments? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Payment of bills.
Judge and Commissioners, the total of the bills for your consideration this morning come to $715,498.18. The two largest items, first of all, we have to the Hood County Appraisal District, $127,950.80 for the quarterly assessment of appraisal and collection services fees. To Net Data Company, $134,550. This, as I understand it, is a progress payment on their project for converting to the RVI imaging system. I'm not sure when the final payment would be due on that, but they're still in progress of bringing that system online. For attorneys and court reporters and visiting judges, there's an amount due of $31,981.45. To the City of Granbury, $28,204.75 for utilities. To Ben E. Keith Company, $15,697.33 for jail groceries. To Election Systems and Software, $15,950.61 for contracted services and annual maintenance. To the Granbury Hood Economic Development Corporation, $25,000 representing a quarterly subsidy payment. And another quarterly subsidy payment to Hood County Committee on Aging, an amount of To Hood County Child Protective Services, a quarterly subsidy payment of $2,500. To Pecan Valley MHMR Region, $5,000 in the form of a quarterly subsidy payment. To the Texas Association of Counties, $35,164.50 for workers' comp insurance premiums. To SAMPAC Five Star Ford, $60,974.88 for the purchase of a 2013 F-350. To U.S. National Bank Association, $48,451.47. This is in payment of Fleet Voyager credit card purchases for fuel for the county vehicles. And then to Vulcan Construction Material for Road Ops Materials, $30,415.60. I have provided payment warrants for each item on the list of accounts payable. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about them, but I would ask for your permission to pay these bills.
One question, back to SAMPAC Ford, we paid 60 grand for one pickup?
I'll let...
Don's saying no.
Or be two.
Better be two.
Should be two of them. Yeah.
Two one times.
Yes.
I seen that, I said no.
Yeah, that's, that's gotta be two, yeah.
All right, I have a motion to approve paying, ratify paying the bills.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, second.
Second.
Commissioner Rohn, and any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Twenty-five, thirty grand.
Preliminary financing proposal from Southwest.
Judge and Commissioners, I'd like to introduce Jim Sabonis. Of course, you know Jim, he is representing First Southwest Company. They have done an extremely good job. I think they have a fine preliminary plan for financing for the county. I believe this will encompass not only the $10 million proposed for the recreation facility, but also provide up to $2 million, should the court choose to pursue that, for purposes of an animal control facility. I would like to say that it's very innovative in that they're proposing to split the financing between two years, and the reason for that is to make sure that the county remains as a small issuer for internal revenue service purposes, and that maintains the county's status as a bank qualified for purposes of, of this debt. Let me caution you and, and tell you that this is very preliminary. I don't believe it's ready for your approval yet. It is very prospective, and all of this is going to be based on bond counsel being able to actually obtain approval of the Attorney General's office for any project and any debt that is anticipated here. So I would hasten to caution you that this is subject to change, depending on the terms of any agreements that might be reached on transfer of real estate or operating agreements with the YMCA or the GISD. We anticipate that all of those will roll out as they are expected, but there is that risk. And so, once again, I say this is not ready for your approval, but really to give you an idea of the direction that we would like to take. With nothing else, I'd like to let Jim make this presentation.
Thank you, Stan.
Good to be here, Judge and Commissioners. I've been fortunate to represent the county for many years, and I'm really pleased to be here to present this preliminary plan of finance. I'm going to summarize before we get started, the county is in, in outstanding financial condition. It maintains its highest ratings that it's ever had. It's got the capacity and, and, and there's tremendous appetite to, to purchase bonds. But what I'm going to ask you to do is, every time we do a plan of finance, I think the best thing anyone should do is start by looking at where you are right now. Now, I'm going to have you to turn to the page numbered three in your presentation to talk a little bit about the outstanding debt you have currently. Currently, the county has $14,360,000 of general obligation debt outstanding, all of it secured by ad verum pledge. The current average cost is 3.87 percent. The longest life is 17 years, but the average life is 7.125 years. There's a list of the transactions that you have outstanding. One of the features that I'll mention to you, as a county, compared to other counties, you have a very low amount of debt outstanding. It's one of the really fine credit features of the county. If you turn to the next page, on page four, you're going to see some statistics and graphical representation of your debt. The two things I want to point out are, one is that this county has very high bond ratings. We are currently rated by Standard &amp; Poor's and Fitch Double A, stable, highest, and it has been increased over the last few years because of the management of the county. Our debt is unique in that we have about 76 percent that's callable. Callable gives you two, two positives. One is that it gives you flexibility in structuring. And secondly, callable debt is refundable for savings. So we monitor your debt, working with your staff. We present our refundings when they have been available. We expect that over time we'll be able to refund these. The last thing I want to point out is the amortization. Here are some statistics here, but you're going to see that this county has not only a little bit of debt outstanding, but it has very rapid amortization. Within 10 years, 67 percent of the debt is outs, is amortized, which is very rapid. And if you turn to page five, it's actually, the graph shows that we have very rapid amortization of debt. We, we've actually, in a good position to fund some capital improvement programs. Over the years, the county's positioned itself, whether it be through the pass-through or for the recreation center, to look to the future for some large projects. In summary, the county's overall balance sheet, again, has a low amount of debt, it's well structured, and it can absorb funding some projects, and we anticipate it will well. If you turn to page seven, a graph on interest rates. It's fascinating, I'm kind of an amateur historian, I, older I get, the more I like history, I don't know why, but, you know, the municipal bond market started after World War II, when they came back and we built America. That's when tax exempt bonds were really put into play. And it's interesting, because early this year, I was able to say that in history, from whenever we actually tracked tax exempt bonds, not 1960, I'm talking about back to the late 40s, interest rates have never been lower. Now, we've actually come up just slightly, but we're kind of in a trading range on a supply and demand. But this graph is just the last 20 or so years, but if we graphed out the entire time that we've tracked municipal bonds, rates have never been in a lower range. On page eight, when I say we're in a trading range, we've got some spot markets over the last year, and you're going to see that our most current is the green. The green line actually shows, this is the yield curve that we actually issue at, and you can see that we're kind of in, you know, a narrow trading range. Our expectation is, for the planning period of this bond, Federal Reserve's indicated that their monetary policy is tied to inflation and unemployment. They intend to keep interest rates below. We expect that for the planning periods, we're going to stay within this, this trading range, and we believe that the trading range will be very acceptable and low cost. In summary, interest rates have never been lower, and there's been a flight to quality, not just because we have a Double A rated credit, but because we are a Texas tax-leaving county. Nationally, we have a tremendous attraction for our bonds when they're sold. If we go back two more pages, we'll talk about our plan of finance. We've actually looked at two items. One is the recently approved Recreation Center, and second is the discussed potential animal control. We've talked about splitting the transaction into two phases. Reason we split it into two phases is that the IRS allows small issuers a unique advantage. If you issue less than $10 million per year, financial institutions get a special enhanced tax write-off when they purchase your debt. In today's world, with the Federal Reserve making cash readily available to financial institutions, they're looking for opportunities to invest. Safest and, and the most aggressive place where they've been is municipal bonds. So what we call that is bank qualified versus non-bank qualified, and the, in history, the gap has never been bigger. So not only are interest rates low, but if we actually issue less than $10 million, the difference between that and issuing over 10 or 11 million would be about 30 basis points. So we've done some work with Stan, looking at the timing. We think that splitting the timing would allow you to take advantage of that, and we're going to show you the timing. You know, we'd actually issue this year, but we would close the second phase in January to meet the IRS requirement. So the funds would be available for construction, just that we want to make sure that we embed the lowest cost possible. Now, our expectation is that we would move forward this summer, both Phase One. We would be prepared to go forward as early as December with a closing in January, because for the IRS regulations, they look at the calendar year. If the funds are not needed, we'll wait till they're actually needed to go forward. We use very conservative assumptions, zero growth in tax value, interest rates as of March 11th, and to make sure that we structure this appropriately. Currently, we're looking at a two-phase issue. Phase one would be about $9 million. Again, it would be $7 million of the YMCA Rec Center funding and up to $2 million of the animal control if you choose to move forward with that. The reason we do this, because again, interest rates are low, and well, we think they're going to be stable. General law, rule of thumb for me is that when they're this low, they're only going to go up, even if it goes up 10 basis points. So we'd like to see if we could get as much as we can funded this year, and then we'd do the residual after the, the timeframe we have. On page 12, you'll see that our expectation is the funds would be in hand this summer to start the process with the Recreation Center and to move forward, if you choose to move forward with the animal control project. December, as early as December, we could issue the, the remaining Rec Center funds, and they would be available in January. The real key is, what's the cost going to be to the county? If you turn to page 12, I want to explain this table, it's one that we, on an ongoing basis, work with, with Stan and, and update and try to understand. On column C is your current taxable assessed value. You actually levy taxes based on $5,381 million of taxes. It grew 2.2 percent from 2012 to 2013. For our planning period, we're not expecting any growth, we're expecting flat value. On column D is your existing debt, that was reflected in the graph earlier. As you can see, it's a good structure, a rapid amortization. And columns E and F represent the actual amortization of the annual control financing debt service and the Phase One financing of the YMCA.
So you're phasing the payoff the same as you are the issuance?
Yes, sir.
That's, I think that's smart.
And, and, and two reasons, one is we, we, we have to, and secondly is that we, when we fund, you've already set your budget for next year, so we have to move to the next level. So we, we want to make sure we have the impact kind of buffered over time. We actually have the amortization of the Rec Center at 10 years. You know, our, one comment we'd make is that we'd kind of match the amortization, have it no faster than the minimum life of your management contract, we want to make sure we have that covered. So right now, we're expecting a minimum 10 years, we'll evaluate that as we go forward. The net impact of the program would be that currently, your INAS tax rate, the component that just supports debt service, this tax year, you leveled 5.24 cents. With this plan put in place, we would level levy 6.77 cents. It'd be an increase of 1.53 cents. The voters, as part of the information received, were indicated it could be up to 2 cents. Clearly, we indicate that, that 1.53 is below that, and as you can see from there, it'll reduce and provide capacity. In summary, as approved, the bond issue, interest rates are as low as they've been, your credit, we expect to have, and we expect to sell these at competitive sale, tremendous bidding and low rates. What we're on is on hold to, we receive the final documentation. As Stan indicated, you know, we've talked to the lawyers, and, and these are unique projects. Two things that we want to strive is, one is that we have to have all debt that's issued by this county is approved by the Attorney General of Texas. But the process we'd like to do is provide him with our contracts and our proceedings prior to actually funding the debt issue to make sure that we have everything, our i's dotted, our t's crossed. And the second part is that, part of that contract that we'd have that would provide a private management has to meet certain statutes to become tax exempt. We're projecting a tax exempt issue, and, and there's a pretty standard qualified management contract guidelines the IRS gives us that allows us to do this. So in summary, we think it's efficient to fund the animal control and the first phase of the Rec Center together. We're looking forward to assisting you. We have a very positive outlook on how this will be implemented, just a matter of having the final documents signed as far as your contracts you land and, and in place. With that, I'll answer any questions that you'd have.
Anyone have any questions?
No, not questions. I think it's a, it's outstanding plan. I'm, I think it speaks to our financial health with, with keeping the, the door open in the event we should have to handle any emergencies during the first three to five years of this. We still have the capacity to do that. So I think it's a great plan. I think we should just, I, I would think our appropriate action would be to authorize Stan to continue working with them and as we move forward on this and finalize our negotiations with GISD.
Okay, do you, I'll entertain a motion then to approve this preliminary financing proposal from First Southwest.
Do we have to do that?
We don't need to do that, I don't think.
We don't, we don't have to. In fact, what, what I would suggest is that this update, when, when you have your documents completed, when they've been submitted and approved, we'll come forward and we'll have a final plan and ask for you to move forward with implementation at that time, and so we're just on hold for that. But again, I want to thank you for allowing us to be participating, and thanks, Stan, for working with us long and hard to prepare this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Judge and Commissioners, I, I would reiterate that Dan Culver of McCall Parkhurst is representing the county as bond counsel. And I can't emphasize enough, one of the, the next steps that needs to happen is all of these related documents need to be given to Mr. Culver so that he can review them in advance of sending them to the Attorney General. And I suppose we're, we're just really not ready to take the next step until that happens.
Well, I don't think we're ready to take the next step until we finalize the, or overcome the hurdle that we're facing right now with the GISD, because that's a major document that has to do with almost a fifth or sixth of this financing. document that has to do with almost a fifth or sixth of this financing and value. So that's why I said I think we need to continue on your end, doing what you have to do, but our marching orders are clear as far as what we have to do with the school.
Well, it's, it's a complex transaction. You've got multiple parties involved, multiple interests, and so it, it won't be easy. But I believe, as Jim has pointed out, the plan to move forward is ready, and the county certainly has the capacity to do that. And as Commissioner Roan just pointed out, it also keeps your financial options open for the future, should you need in 2015 to borrow money to buy equipment, for example, or if you have other projects that you want to pursue in the future. One of the beautiful things about this plan is that Jim and Andre have made sure that our annual debt service continues to hover around $3 million, which is just a very level, controlled plan. And I, I really appreciate Jim. I want to thank him for what he has brought to the court this morning.
Thank you very much. Next item is item C, number one, miscellaneous. Consider request from Cancer Care Services Teresa McCoy to allow fundraiser flyer.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. The county has been allowing us to put a flyer in the paycheck envelopes prior to this annual fundraising event for several years now, and so I've come back to you today as a member of the Cancer Care Services Committee to allow us to do that again. And for the newer court members who may not be familiar with this organization, it is a 501(c)(3). We provide financial, spiritual, social, and all, all of those kind of things like that, that, that health insurance may or may not cover to cancer patients in Hood County. Cancer Care Services is only in three counties. They're in Tarrant, Parker, and Hood, and they track all of the money for each county separately. So the money that's raised by this Hood County Steering Committee goes to help patients who live in Hood County. So this is a help these people right here, right now kind of situation. Although money for research is very important, this organization again helps people right here, right now. And in fact, we've been able to help provide some services to county employees who have had cancer. So it's very near and dear to my heart, and I would just ask that you approve allowing us to put that flyer in the envelopes, March 15th, this Friday's payroll.
This, this is another of those organizations, Judge, that works quietly without a lot of publicity and does a lot of good for a lot of people. So I'd make a recommendation we approve it.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Dever to approve the request to allow fundraiser flyer to be inserted in March 15th payroll. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the county clerk's request for expenditures of $31,204 from Fund 68 for the preservation of one historic probate book. Reading a memo, a memo from Susan Gammage. Excuse me for that slip.
Judge and Commissioners.
Morning.
I am coming this morning to ask, I have finally gotten pricing on the loose case files that we have from the 1800s, and I've got two boxes of them. I also included in that, that $31,204 is the digitizing of those old documents. There is one thing I did not put in there, and I'm sorry I didn't. It was $50 for the, the elections thing that...
UC Campbell.
UC Campbell gave us, yeah.
First election results, Hood County.
That does go up by $50.40, so it would be $31,254.40. I'd ask for your approval. That amount would come out of our, my Fund 68.
She already has the funds for this, right?
Yes, I already have the funds for this.
All right, I entertain a motion to approve this.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Treasurer, consider for approval, allowing treasurer to secure two credit card machines, one for animal control and one for the sheriff's office, and allow county judge to sign the application for merchants' card processing.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Last court I brought to you the purchase, not purchase, excuse me, the securing of a credit card machine for the county attorney. On my way out of court that day, the sheriff stopped me and asked me if I would get two more, one for animal control and the other one to be used at the sheriff's office. I would ask the court to approve these machines. They are of no charge to the county. We collect a fee that offsets the fee that is charged to us.
Recommend for approval. I think, I don't see how we've got along as long as we haven't handled control without one.
Have motion made by Commissioner Roan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Sheriff, discuss and consider take appropriate action regarding animal control adoption fees for $15 for altered animals and 75 for unaltered animals for a six-month trial period.
Judge and Commissioner, I'm going to have Sergeant McNabb come up here, and she's had some discussions with each of you and has some of the details and had recent discussions with the, some of the veterinarians that, that are in the county. So Sergeant McNabb has done an outstanding job, I might add, in the short time she's been there. And I might also bring to the attention of the court that she's one of the distinguished alumni of the Lawrence High School Kansas Lions, of which I graduated from.
That sounds like nepotism.
We won't, and we won't hold that against her.
Behind me.
We knew that.
That's right. And today, I'm asking for your approval for the adoption fee and voucher program that I had sent you all a proposal a few weeks ago. It would just mean the public would adopt an animal from animal control with an adoption fee of $75 for the unaltered animals. That would include a voucher for a spay and neuter and then a rabies voucher. For the already altered animals, it would be a $15 adoption fee, and that would be for the voucher for the rabies. You either have a $75 adoption fee or a $15 adoption fee. It's not combined. It's not $90. It's either 75 or 15. And I think that this will help in showing the public that we care about the animals that are being adopted out and the responsibility of being a pet owner. And I'm asking for your approval on this today for a six-month trial period effective, it would start going into effect April 1st. That would give me time to get the vouchers printed.
Okay.
I think this is a good program. She's done a good job on this, and I think we ought to give her permission to try it for the six months.
I agree.
Let me ask one quick question. Judy, did you want to talk about this or the other subject?
I can wait.
Okay, all right. All right, do it, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Tout. Is there any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Kelly. Discuss and can take appropriate action moving forward on the EOC grant. Who's, oh, okay.
These are the documents that were emailed to each of you. I just printed them off because we knew there was some trouble issues printing some of the things.
Obviously, I'm taking this place for the sheriff. And what we're looking to do here is just move forward in the process of this EOC grant. We've done quite a bit of work so far as far as getting the FEMA flood insurance rate map, the national wetlands inventory. We're to the point now to where we need to, to appoint an architect to look at this. If we move forward with this, everything has to be completed, all invoices in by February the 28th of next year. So time's going down. We either need to move forward or not, so we're asking that we do.
I agree.
I agree too. We need to go get on with this and not lose this thing.
You waiting on? No, seriously. I'll entertain a motion to, to approve moving forward on this EOC grant and building a new EOC. Wait a minute. Who made that? Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Dever. And all, any further discussion on this item? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all very much. You did a wonderful job. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding animal control shelter preliminary schedule from McGee Architects LP.
Judge, Commissioners, how are you all this morning? I have an update for you along with schedule and preliminary cost estimate. In the, the last couple of weeks, we've had an opportunity to talk with some of our contractors. We've come up with a preliminary cost estimate and preliminary schedule. This is to give you a rough idea of the sequence, not that you have to abide by any of the items in the particular schedule, but if today you were to approve the schematic, then you can see sort of the timelines that we would take and start to try to hit to move this project forward. As far as the cost estimate goes, that is based on the questions that we'd ask in the past. We had been talking strictly about the building. This is a cost estimate strictly for the building. Obviously, there are project costs, and some of those, as we've discussed in the past, that you will have some earth that you will be able to take to, from some of your cleanings and some of your dredgings and various things like that, that might be appropriate to be used for the pad for this site if we stay on the same site that we're currently talking about off 51. So to keep everything even, we looked at the building, and then the site effects will be something that we'll have to take into consideration. And the more the county does on that, then the less expense it is to the overall building. Beyond that, we'll need soils test, survey test, engineering, civil fees, architectural fees, landscaping, and any paving or utilities that would need to be connected to that beyond the boundary of the building itself. In the cost estimate, this is based on the next shot that we have. This is the site that we're currently looking at. It's a little over five acres or approximately five acres for the building itself. It's, it's a little over, it's somewhere between one and two acres, depending on where we end up drawing the final line. All of this property is needed not only for the small animal control, but also the larger animal control that you'll be looking at as you go through this. I understand you get a variety of animals, you know, from cows, horses, llamas, et cetera. So you need the large animal areas as well. The next shot that we have is the schematic of the facility itself. It's approximately 10,000 square feet, has approximately 90 kennels. In this particular scheme, we're looking at providing about a third of those kennels. When you go into a project like this in a schematic form, there are a lot of issues that we can take to look at, and we continue the, once you set a budget, we don't really consider that to be the budget. We always look for ways to improve that budget, not necessarily make it more expensive, but to make it better. What you're looking at here is we would have epoxy floors, we're looking at stainless steel kennels, we're looking at ceramic tile walls, you know, a very durable environment. Nothing's fancy, nothing's special, but it's a durable environment. We're using a metal building frame, which would have interior columns to allow for that. We're looking at split system for the HVAC. And if you look at the cost estimate, you notice a large portion of this is the mechanical, plumbing, and electrical. The plumbing, you know, is a big portion of this site with the drainage in each of the kennels and how that works, and that's the success of your building, as well as the type of kennels that we take and use. This is done in a way that these are, they're all modular so that as future growth occurs, or if we're able to take to decrease some of the costs that are available to us now with some, I guess, value engineering is what I would call it best, then we would be able to take to add enhancements to the project for the same number of dollars. So that's, that's how we approach these. If, if you go with a, on the schedule, it talks about the, the type of contracting methodology that you would use. There are various ones available to you. The two that we see the most often used, when we talk with counties and clients, is either a CMAR, which is construction management at risk, where you have a one-step or a two-step process that we're very versed in to be able to take, to put a program out so that you can get a good solicitation of general contractors. The other one is stipulate some, where you would go out for proposals, and there are fixed-price proposals. In those, you see one number in the CMAR process. You see all of these numbers. You have a little bit more flexibility, we feel like, in the current environment that we're in. Currently, the labor market is still very stable, but we are seeing it inch up. If you look at all your various indicators, and you heard some of those on your bonding a little while ago, it's still very stable, but there is pressure, a little upward pressure. We took bids approximately two weeks ago on another project that was slightly larger than this. We had one concrete bid and two electrical bids. All of the other bidding categories, out of the 16 categories that we track on a regular basis, had five and six bidders still. So we're seeing a little bit of, of pressure on those other two. That will vary. I think primarily the reason for that is not that the economy is, is going all that great, it's that most of these contractors and subcontractors have cut back on their staffing to the point where, where they would have 10 or 12 superintendents, they're now running five and six. So if they get one or two more jobs than their current staffing, we're not seeing a lot of pressure to hire people. They're just trying to do that, and then they will either, either try to push their margins up or decline the work. And so what we've seen is a decline in bidding in some of those categories wherever, where those people have had their, not increased their staffing, but have increased their job load. So that's the pressure that we're seeing in the market right now. Not a lot, but it's, but it's a little different than, than what we talked about, say, a month and a half ago. This is where we are this morning. I would, the, the plan sort of speaks for itself. There's, you know, we have most of the public functions in the front of the building, which is where they should be. The next layer back is where you would have the display of the animals that are ready for adoption, whether it would be dogs or cats in that small sort of purplish-blue area in the center of the facility. And then we have access to all of the kennels. We are strictly divided with a split AC system. You're looking at probably, we're looking at probably five-ton units, maybe 10-ton units that would be split with a condenser outside, air handler inside, and that would be for the various areas so that we can make sure we segregate the animals as they come in, whether, if they're, or they're quarantined, or if they need to be separated in some form or fashion. And we would split the kennels between those. So that is the type of approach that we're looking at, and obviously, we want to maximize everything that we possibly can. The sides of the building, we are using, I guess for lack of a better term, sort of a pole barn type of approach whereby you would have shielding over those outside kennels on either side. It's a standard, there's multiple ways to do that. I usually prefer going back to like a tube system, tube steel system, rather than the metal building frame system because it doesn't attract as many birds. So that's one of the issues when we go out with a little canopy like that. The other issue, depending on where we finally place this, within the city limits or without the city limits, if we were to take and provide stone on all four sides on this building, we're looking somewhere, but probably at current rates, about $15 a square foot, somewhere between $75,000 and $100,000 for, for stone or a harder type of material rather than the standard metal building, if it falls within those jurisdictions.
What about just on the front? I mean...
Half the front, I think we've talked about.
The front, well, at about $15, it'd probably be up a little higher than that just because it's not that much, but there's, on the front, there's probably about 1,500 to 1,600 square feet. So you're looking at $15,000, $20,000 in round numbers at current prices today that we've been given.
We're talking with the city right now about maybe going halfway up or all the way up. So there's options there that we can cut costs.
Yeah, there are a lot of options there that we can take to make it certainly a very presentable building, and it's something that, once we start to look at that and we, if we decide to move forward, you know, in the timeframe that we're talking about, then we can take, and we're more than happy, and we typically do go straight to the city, you know, from that standpoint, once we establish the site.
Tilt wall's another option, too. Tilt wall.
Yes. Tilt wall is another option. One of the things that we do with that, in some of the later energy codes, it's, it's a little different way of insulating those, and we found on the shorter walls, other than the durability aspect, which we absolutely, you know, appreciate that, we found the cost is just slightly higher on that, but it's something that, since that's a single system type of approach, we would anticipate, and this would be our normal practice, we would anticipate looking at tilt wall... anticipate looking at tilt wall, CMU, you know, the metal siding, the plaster siding, stone. So since those are basically all single items, it's something that's very easy for us to give to you. One of the critical aspects of that is if you decide to go with a CMAR, construction manager at risk approach, then we would want them involved in the costing of that because they would be the ones that would be carrying it forward. If it stipulates some, then we do the estimates a little differently in our office and with a, an outside consultant as well. So we try to have several different sources of costing to try to get an average across the industry based on the current timing of bids.
Okay, so you, basically you do all the architect work and, or do you do construction management, is that?
No, sir.
No, you're just architect?
I do, I do the architecture and the mechanical electrical engineering, you know, that's required to get the project up. We monitor it all the way through, all the way through the end of construction. We coordinate whatever the contractor does, we, you know, review his pay request, you know, various things that are all required in a, in a typical job. That's what, that's what we do. You know, we go and meet with the city, take care of all the, of the development from that standpoint. Coordinate, you know, as a county, you will have certain things that you'll want to put in, you may move some existing equipment, you may look at some other equipment. We go through and coordinate that with our drawings and with the general contractor with that. We also have that we would get with the purchasing agent. In the last month, we've put out probably three or four of the CMAR packages. We have a standard package that we would bring to her to show her how we work and that's with, and you're probably gonna laugh at me, I know there's, I think it's code 270 with the procurement for CMAR, there's a number in there. It's, basically it's a state legislature code number that you take to use for those and it would include these drawings because they need to know roughly what the project looks like. It would include a detailed description of the type of materials that would be in it. It also includes a sample contract, sample general conditions, which basically are the rules that we play by, and then all the other exhibits. It's a little booklet that's about half an inch thick that gives them everything they need to know about how you would expect them to perform, how you would pay them, et cetera. So they have a good, they have a good idea of what to take to provide. And I think probably the most important thing in that package is about a 60-item checklist, 50 to 60 item checklist, so that you know what they're paying their superintendents, what they're paying for their insurances, you know, all of their general conditions so that you have a good idea of what that is and that price is set at that point.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Mr. McGee? Biff? No, none? Anybody have any questions? Okay, then I guess then, Judy, do you want to come up and talk about this? Just a minute.
Judge and Commissioners, thank you for considering all of the issues concerning animals in Hood County. Thank you for adopting the adoption fee and approving that. Hopefully that will eventually reduce the number of unwanted animals that come into animal control. And thank you again very much for considering the new animal control facility or animal services as I would like to call it. I think it's important for Hood County to get into the correct position to improving the lives of animals in Hood County. As a rescuer, I can give you many success stories and I can also give you many horror stories. I won't go into details and take up any more time, but it's, this is an important issue and thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to commend Sergeant Kelly McNabb. She has done a fantastic job in a very, very short period of time.
She has.
We expect no less from the people from Kansas, right Biff? All right, then I think that we need to have a motion to accept this preliminary schedule from the McGee Architect.
So moved.
Okay, have a motion made by Commissioner Taut, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Is there any further discussion on this? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding election administrators' request to increase budget for training.
Good morning Judge and Commissioners. Since I've taken my position, I've had time to kind of assess things and Christie was trained of getting the machines set up for the election day. She was not trained on tabulating and she was not trained on the tabulator machine for the paper ballots. I was trained on different machines, they're from a heart company, not ESNS. I have talked with ESNS and they will come and do a one-day training for both Christie and I for $2,075.
In-house?
In-house. And they will sit with us all day long and get us trained up on both machines so we know everything for the May election. So I'm requesting funds for that. Also, there is money for me to go to the election law seminar in July, but there is no money for Christie to go. And she is a voter registrar's office, so she really needs a lot of this training also. So I'm requesting some additional funds for that. The only thing is I also talked to Secretary of State and we have some money in Chapter 19 funds, so they would reimburse us at the state level for some of those, that money that we would use.
The training money.
Yes. And we also through Chapter 19 can have a temporary employee for those three days that we would be gone. And I've talked to a county clerk's lady that's retired, Marlena Stuckey. And she was, she could be available that time, so we already have a person that knows what to do.
That would be paid for too, right?
Yes. And they would reimburse us for the payment of that person.
So the only new money we're looking for really is, is the?
2,700.
Twenty, $2,075.
Right, and we have to have an additional money, like $700 or so for Christie to go.
Christie's training.
Right, with me to Secretary of State's.
About 2,800.
Yes, sir.
What would most likely be our source for that?
You have a contingency fund that has not been used, Commissioner.
Well, we need to get these done, there's no question. They have to have the training and.
I'll entertain a motion then.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Taut to approve the increase in the budget for training for the election administrators' office. Any further discussion on this item? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much Cricket.
Thank you all very much.
Discuss and take appropriate action on budget line item 10, 460, 330, supplies for JP-1. Where is JP-1?
Go get him Bailiff.
Stan, are you handling this or is?
Well, I, I know some of it. I know that he didn't expect some of the expenditure he had for his clock and things like that, how he's planning, so it has run, I'm sure.
Yeah, he's setting up a brand-new office, so that, and this is another contingency item, right Stanley?
Well, but it's a Fund 55 item, so it's, I mean, it's, I guess it's a contingency only because we didn't know for certain what setting a new office up would cost, but.
What is the amount?
I don't know.
I forgot what the amount was, do you remember?
The amount for the clock is about $600 or something like that for the time being clock. But I don't know what he's requesting.
I think it seemed, it's less than $2,000.
Yeah, and he just discussed the clock with me, he didn't, he didn't, he told us anything else. I don't know that.
I didn't even know about the clock, I knew about the supplies.
Well, and I think it's because he told us to take his clock out of the clock.
Yeah. Which he wasn't counting on, so.
Well, we, we knew this when he was coming in, we just didn't know. I'll entertain a motion to approve that then.
With, with a ceiling of some kind?
To, pardon?
Not to exceed $2,000.
Not to exceed $2,000 worth of supplies and then the clock on top of that.
With the approval of the purchasing agent.
With the approval of purchasing, okay. Who's making that motion?
Oh, Mike.
He did.
Okay, Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Consider, take appropriate action, purchase a computer from Fund 55 for the county court at law. Who's doing this?
We, we are trying to, we are trying to make it.
Maybe they're in court.
They may be busy in court, but they do have some older systems Judge and I'll go ahead and speak as far as I know about that part of it. We did examine the system, they have some systems that, there again, we stretch them as far as we can. We try to make them go the distance and they, they have a couple of systems and this is one of those systems that, that, you know, we've put it back together enough times that it's time to, to actually replace this system and moving forward. This is one of the older systems, again, in the county and so I'm coming as technology department that I would go ahead and recommend this from a technology standpoint. These systems that we have purchased in the last four to five months, they average right around $900 a system on that. I do not, I apologize, I do not have this figure in front of me today and I usually have those with me, but they have ran around $800 to $1,000 depending on the system on average right now.
Then if we had a motion not to exceed $1,000, that?
I, I think that that would be safe to say in this, since I don't have that number right in front of me, I don't know if you had it, but, so anyway, I know that, that it, depending on if we replace the monitor Judge, but those have been running right at $900 in average there, I'd say $800 to $1,000. There again, depending if we replace the monitor. And we look at those, just if the monitor is just absolutely one of those ones that is the older monitor, then we go ahead and replace that at the time.
It's not, not likely that it would be.
Not to exceed $1,200 Judge.
In case you had to do the monitor?
Just, just in case when we do that, we have, if there is a shipping, but generally we try to do everything where there's no shipping or anything.
All right, then do I have a motion to approve not to exceed 1,200? Commissioner Roan?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
I see.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Consider take appropriate action to approve resolution for the John Graves Scenic Resway, this is Riverway, Commissioner Precinct 2.
Did you bring it?
I presume it's in a, in a folder here. Do you want to read it or you don't have it?
No, I don't have a copy with me.
Here it is.
I wrote it, I sent it to y'all.
Does it have to be read?
No, if everybody's read it, it doesn't have to be read.
You've all gotten copies of it?
Yes.
So I'll make the motion that we approve the resolution, which is basically to extend the John Graves Scenic Riverway all the way through Hood County.
I'll second.
Somerville by the way is doing the same to get it through there.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion on this?
Only that it be sent immediately to where it needs to go. Does it need to go to Kefir or who's it need to go to?
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We adjourned.